All right, ladies and gentlemen. This then will be the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for Tuesday, March 3, 2009. City Clerk, could you call the role?
Councilmembers Njarian, Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
Here. And could we have your report, please, Mr. City Clerk?
Agenda for the March 3, 2009, special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 26, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you. And could we hear the item at?
Two.
At two, please.
General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Glendale Water and Power Strategic Plan 2000 for 2009 to 2014. Two ways in motion to note and file the report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Steiger is our General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. We have one speaker card, so you know, at this point. And it's like we have a massive PowerPoint presentation. However, did that happen? Anyway, however, this is a strategic plan, and that takes some time. Strategy takes time, so we're here for you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Draymond, and thank you very much, and members of the Glendale City Council. I am very pleased to be here today to present the result of a nine-month effort by what we are calling the GWP Design Team to present a five-year strategic plan, which we believe also sets forth the foundation for GWP's direction beyond that timeframe. So I'd like to start with just a little philosophy. The philosophy behind the plan, and one of the reasons it took nine months, is because it utilized a philosophy of inclusion. And what that means is, we included just about every stakeholder within the city of Glendale. Most importantly, however, we included the ability of all GWP employees to participate in this process. When all was done, well over half of the employee base of GWP directly participated in the development of our plan. And I'm very, very pleased to announce that to you, because I think that goes a long way in developing a meaningful plan that has ownership throughout. So what I'd like to do is move ahead and go through what we've done, how we've done it, and what the strategic plan actually will be. And this plan, first of all, the plan you see is what we're giving to our employees. So let me start with this.
How people within a city feel about their city government is related to the people that they interface with most. And they may see us in the paper occasionally as council members, but the people they interact with most and most directly, and often first and only, are our GWP employees. The idea that, like any other kind of commodity or service, a ratepayer is making a contract with our city. They're saying, "All right, our elected officials, we send them there, they're telling us we need to pay these rates to get quality service, we have to deliver a quality service." We hear everything in this city, the good and the bad and everything in between. I can tell you that the issues related to water service, electrical service in this city are absolutely just a cut above.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Steiger.
Let me start at the beginning. We, as a design team, and the design team, for the most part, is here today. It is made up of the senior management of GWP, Peter Kavonis, Steve Lins, Tammy Vallier, Ned Bassin, Ramona Buag, and also we had Dan Waters participate, and our facilitator, Peter Lewis, who's here today. We started back in July. Take a look at, as we say here, the big picture. So before we built the plan, we examined the big picture. We discussed what the world looks like today and what we expect it to look like over the course of the next five years, and how that related to the GWP marketplace in terms of opportunities, threats, and so on. We identified trends. And remember, we did this between six and nine months ago, and this is kind of interesting as to the way it played out. The first trend, increasing worldwide economic uncertainty. When we started talking back in July about where we were heading, the economic uncertainty that we see today was nowhere near as intense as it is. So clearly, that was the number-one priority for us. Increasing growth in California and the world, putting pressure on our water and energy supplies, a higher standard of living and services translating to greater expectations from our customers. Increasing concern for human health and the environment, increasing climate change, a major issue for us. Smaller workforce shifting to a new economy, a very, very significant issue for GWP and all utilities right now. Increasing safety and security. Finally, the concern about increasing maintenance, repair, or replacement of our infrastructure. Now, I want to take a second and go over this particular chart, because this is key. This is our stakeholder map. We discussed this at length. We debated, we prioritized, we strategized over all the stakeholders that we now see on a daily basis. And this is what our world looks like at GWP. And if you look at this, it's supposed to be a circle, it looks a little bit more like a football, but nonetheless, within that circle, that's inside Glendale, and outside is outside Glendale. And then we have four quadrants, competitors, customers, resources, and regulators. The color coding means green is a required strategy. And as we move through this plan, you'll see that we've put strategies together that target the stakeholders in green. The gold is a possible strategy. Those are ones that we mentioned but don't have necessarily very specific strategies. And the ones that aren't, that have no color associated with them at all, are stakeholders that we monitor and we're aware of, but we didn't necessarily develop strategies around. But to just give you a sense of what we have, if you look under the regulator quadrant, now that's not regulator in traditional sense of the word, that means any stakeholder that has an impact on how we do business, both inside and outside. And of course, in that case, we actually redefined it in terms of state, regional, and national regulators, plus inside the city. So you can see there's many, many stakeholders that impact what we do, and we need to be cognizant of how to deal with them on a daily and strategic basis. So some of the opportunities that we discussed, our customers can serve more water and energy. That's a given. That's an opportunity that we have to cultivate. Customers utilize more recycled water and solar and other new technologies for energy efficiency. Customers use real-time data through Smart Grid. GWP gains more green energy to reduce our carbon footprint. All of these get reduced down to strategy. So as we move through, you'll see how we reduce them all down. We sell more power outside the city. We reduce our peak loads. We receive positive publicity and support. That's an opportunity that we need to cultivate. Joint resource projects increase our access to power supplies. And essentially, that's how we do a lot of our power supply today, through SCAPA, the Southern California Public Power Authority. And finally, advanced technologies provide new efficiencies and solutions to GWP while creating potential new business opportunities for us. So these are some of the opportunities that we identified that bubbled to the surface. So we decided our plan must consider these priorities after looking at that list. Water supply. We need to maximize the production of local water resources and the efficiency of water use. Power supply. Ensure reliable power supply under severe legislative and regulatory controls, increasing, by the way, and restrictions through a portfolio of resources that includes at a minimum a reconfigured Grayson Power Plant. Customer service. Achieve high customer service satisfaction level by increasing the value of all of our programs and services. Rates. And I know this one is near and dear to all of our hearts, and we're going to talk about that at length. Achieve water and electric rates that are at the median of comparable utilities in Southern California. And we're going to talk more about how we're going to do that in a few minutes. Aging infrastructure. Assure the highest achievable service reliability by continuously improving and maintaining the GWP physical plant, electric, and water facilities. Workforce. Hire, develop, and retain a safe, highly skilled, dedicated, and customer-focused workforce. Under systems, utilize new and existing information systems and technologies that reduce GWP's costs, enhance customer service, and increase operational effectiveness. The city of Glendale, because that's where we live, and we are an integral part of the city, we're proud of that, and we want to build upon that. So we want additional collaboration, both within the city organization and the city itself, to improve both the city's and GWP's efficiency and public image. And finally, legislation and regulation. We need to increase the influence of local, state, and federal legislation and regulations to benefit our operations. Now, these are our priorities. Old plan built around this, that we're now going to dig into in a minute. So that means that we had to establish a direction. And so to get to the direction, we needed a mission, a vision, values, key result areas, goals, initiatives, and a way to measure it. Our mission, very simply, to be your trusted community utility. That's it. That's what we are here for. Our vision, which we expect to maximize at the end of the five-year plan, but this is really what we're about, to deliver reliable, high-quality, environmentally sensitive, and sustainable water and power services to our customers in a caring and cost-competitive manner, while creating a stimulating and rewarding work experience for our employees. Our values. And I think it's interesting, at this point, to mention the fact that while these are the bedrock of our existence and the decision criteria that we use on a daily basis, that some of these are a direct result of the input of our employee base. The design team worked hard, and we spent many, many hours, many, many days, actually, on this plan. But much of the important things came from our total employee base. And so dedication to customer service, that's a given, that's our key value. Trustworthy and respectful. Ownership. What does that mean? That means that we at GWP own this plan, all of us, every one of us. We own it, we're responsible for it, we own what we do. And so we all have a job, and we own everything we do on a daily basis. Teamwork. Do it right. Do it right was a clear result of our employee input. We heard over and over again how important it was to do the job right the first time, and continuous improvement. Those are our values. The key result areas start to look a whole lot like our priorities, and they are. And these are the areas where we must achieve measurable success over the next five years and beyond. Water supply, power supply, customer service, rates, water infrastructure, power infrastructure, workforce, systems, city of Glendale, legislation and regulation. Now, let me go down a little bit into the plan. This is next level down. This is where we start to look at our actual, specific goals, every one of them measurable. Under water supply, to produce 3,856 acre-feet per year from the Verdugo Basin by 2014. In so many words, that's an increase from where we are today. Serve 2,500 acre-feet per year recycled water by 2013. And I want to point out that, if you notice, every one of these goals is specific and has a timeframe associated with it. It puts pressure on us to make sure that we perform. Institute a 2.5 percent public benefit charge, like charge, to fund water conservation measures by December of 2010. This is a critical issue, and as we've all seen, water conservation is becoming more and more important to us. And reduce water usage by 7 percent over a base year of 2006 by 2014. On the power supply side, reduce electrical usage by 7 percent, again, by 2014. And that's the horizon of this plan, if you recall. Some of the goals go beyond that, and we'll talk about that. Increase Grayson Power Plant efficiency to less than a 10,000 BTU heat rate by 2015. That's a significant goal. It's a significant project, has many, many activities underneath it, and I'm going to show you the activities. I'm not going to bore you to death with what they all are, but I will show you them. And we can dig into anyone you want to see in a little later on in the presentation. Reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020. It's the right thing to do, but beyond that, it's also the law. So that's where we are. Achieve a balanced energy portfolio, also by 2020. What that means is, we need to balance our portfolio among renewables, our own plant, Grayson, long-term power supply, and market power supply. Within that balanced energy portfolio, we will be coming back to you sometime in the near future and ask for an increased renewable portfolio standard by the year 2020. Increase from where we are today, most likely in the area of 33% to 35% of renewables. And we think that's doable, and we think it's the right thing to do. And operate our energy management group, that's our trading group, under defined metrics beginning in July 2010. That's a nice way of saying we're reorganizing, and we're getting much, much more aggressive in what we do in that area. Customer service. Consistently achieve above-average customer satisfaction from the California Municipal Utilities Association survey by December 2010. Ensure that all affected customers and public are consistently notified of all of our activities by December of this year. We've already got initiatives in place to ensure that happens. Restore minor power outages within 10 minutes and major outages within 20 minutes. That's a lofty goal, particularly the 20 minutes. Now, on the rate side, and as I said, we can go into this in a much deeper way. And what I might suggest is, if you wait a couple of minutes, we'll get to the actual activities of how we're going to get there. So I'll run through this, and then we'll go into our actual plan to get there. But we want to establish water rates at or below 80% of the average rates in this area in Southern California by 2014. And I can show you additional graphs on where we are today. And we're about mid-pack, so on water rates, we're not in too bad a shape. Reduce the electric rates, and I want to be very clear as to what this says. This is our stretch goal, but it's a very important one. Be 35% below Southern California Edison by 2014. Now, why did we choose that? Why is that so important? Southern California Edison is our prime competitor. Many times, people don't think of utilities as competing. It is clearly a competitor of ours, and if we're not careful, and if we don't keep our rates well below theirs, that can create problems for us in many different ways. So 35% below Southern California Edison is our benchmark, and we have very specific strategies to get there that I'll talk about in a minute. But keep in mind, that's our benchmark. It's not necessarily a 35% rate reduction, and I want to be very clear about that. Increase our annual electrical wholesale net revenue to $10 million. That's, again, a lofty goal. It's somewhat of a stretch, but not that much. We think we can do it. We have the pieces in place today, and we think within five years, that's a reasonable goal. And then reduce our electric system losses to 10% by 2014, actually, less than 10%. Let me explain what that means. Every utility has line losses, every electric utility, and water utility, too, and we'll talk about that. But the electric utilities have line losses that are associated with the losses you get in the wires, the transformers, substations, and so on. Generally, most utilities are somewhere in the 7% to 8% to 10% range. That's pretty standard. We are well above that, and we know that our system is no less efficient than anyone else's. So that says one thing to us, and we are fairly convinced this is the case. We are pretty sure that we have a much higher degree of theft of service, because we've not concentrated on it. Many large utilities have made it a major, major area of concentration, in fact, have whole departments dedicated to theft of service. We don't. So since our losses are substantially higher today than 10%, substantially, we know that we can do a whole lot better, and we are now putting in place today initiatives that will look at theft of service and bring that number down. That alone will help to reduce rates. Water infrastructure. We talk about line losses on the electric side, there's also unaccounted-for water on the water side. The good news is, we're not nearly as out of alignment on the water side as we are on the electric side, but we still have some ways to go there, too. And there could be theft of service on the water side, so we'll be looking at the same type of thing for water. And that number is 5% by June 2011. We are also initiating a program right now to replace all small meters that were installed before 2004 by 2011. That is twofold. Number one, to bring it up to current industry standards. Secondly, because as meters get older, they get slower. And thirdly, because it's part of our Smart Grid system. So we will be, these will be automated meters, besides the fact that they are replacing old meters. Replace and rehabilitate 25 miles of pipe by 2014, infrastructure, and implement an effective asset management program by 2013. At some point in the not-too-distant future, we expect to come back to the city council and explain what asset management is, because I could take the rest of the day and do that. It's an entire program, and I won't bore you to death today. But suffice it to say that it will improve our efficiency on the water side, and if you notice, it also exists on the electric side, and we'll be back with you on that one. On the power infrastructure side, we are looking to reduce total number of outages to less than 25 per year, and that should also be by June 2014. Somehow, that got left out.
First, Captain.
If it is, good luck. Even we're not that good. We're pretty good.
All right, but what do you think our total?
This past year, in fact, I think I have, this year, or to date?
The last full year.
The last full year, I think it was somewhere around the 50 to 60 number. Yeah, so it's about double that. Upgrade our transmission system to 69 KV. We are in the midst of doing that by 2014. That will give a lot of reliability to our system when we do that. And at the same time, convert the existing 4 KV, 4 KV being 4,000 volts, to 12,000 volts by 2020. When we do that, we'll have unanimity of voltage throughout the city. Replace all of our electrical mechanical relays with state-of-the-art relays by 2018. And again, you'll notice that some of these goals go beyond five years. And again, the asset management. Now, workforce is very important to us and becoming more and more critical, because it's getting more and more difficult to get highly-trained, skilled workers that want to work in our business, for whatever reason. So we need to continue to work on improving job satisfaction, which we will do. Increase the workforce availability. And what does that mean? Our availability is affected by many things, not the least of which are vacations, sick time, and so on. We need to increase it. Right now, it's less than 87%, believe it or not. So we need to increase it to 87%. We want to have a continual less-than-5% vacancy rate by 2012. And very importantly, we need to establish a OSHA incident rate, which is a function of accidents, injuries, and time worked, to 2.0. Now, that's a very, very lofty goal for a utility, but we can do that by 2014. And then, of course, having zero preventable vehicle accidents each year beginning in Under systems, 100% AMI meter saturation by 2013. That's our Smart Grid. You hear about the Smart Grid, we've talked about the Smart Grid, where we are ready to implement that system. We'll be coming back to you shortly with the entire program. And we expect to have it within, the meter piece done within about four to five years, and then move on from there. We need to completely integrate our GIS system, which it's not right now, by 2013. Excuse me for one minute. Thank you very much, sir. Implement new Department of Finance processes. What that means is, along with our new trading process and philosophy, we also need to make sure that we have all the right financial backup that's needed to do that. The city's Department of Finance functions as our, what we call, back office, and it's very important that we have the right systems in place to connect our front office, which is our trading group, our middle office, which is our risk management group, and our back office, which is Department of Finance. And we expect to have systems in place within a year and a half. We need additional system integration that assures no redundant data entry by 2013. And we expect to launch new profitable business ventures, potentially fiber optics, for example, by 2013. Within the city of Glendale, we know we need to improve communications, that's a given. At all times, we need to continue to improve communications with our customers, with yourselves, and other city departments. And that's ongoing, and we say beginning in November, but that's really beginning now. This one's an interesting one. I'm not choking on it.
I just would point out that that is local water that you're drinking.
Yes. It's GWP water. What we've said here is determine the optimum value of the transfer to provide mutual benefits to the city and GWP by 2014. What that means is, we fully expect to bring in additional sources of revenue that could actually enhance the transfer to the city and allow us, as GWP, to enhance our own financial base, all through additional methods of bringing dollars in. So that's an area that we have a full strategy determined for, and looks at the transfer as a very, very positive thing, as an opportunity for GWP to continue to support the city in a very meaningful way. Implement communications vehicles to improve our public image. We talked about public image, very important to us. And the collaborative ventures with city departments, and we know that we need to do more with city departments, because there's more to do. Under legislation and regulation, this is critical, given the amount of compliance that we're now faced with. We continue to get more and more compliance regulatory issues on us all the time. Greenhouse gas is just one of many, but that's one that people are aware of. But we have what we call NERC compliance, which means now under severe reliability standards nationally implemented, and if we don't comply, there are strict and very severe penalties to be paid. So our compliance efforts continue to increase and are very important, and we need a strategy built around that. Establish and continue ongoing relationships with state and federal legislators and regulators. And along with that, develop a specific legislative strategy. It's something that, at least in my tenure here, we've really not had a true legislative strategy for GWP. We have to have that. It's very, very important. We've already started to work on that, but we need a very specific strategy. And then finally, provide quarterly reports on major activities and successes beginning in January of 2010, along the lines of legislation and regulation. Now, I'm not going to go through each one of these, because it would take forever, but what this shows you is, this is the plan. If you notice, each yellow line is one of the goals that I just discussed. And then underneath that, we have all the initiatives and the activities. And as I say, I won't go through each one of these, because it'll take hours, but I will go through a couple of key ones that are important, I know, to you and to our constituency. But if you notice, in water supply, we tried to be a little bit.
This is very colorful.
Yeah, it is a colorful plan. Yes, it is. And we tried to be a little bit innovative here. We called one of them Morewells, and we had nice, affectionate names here. But basically, these are true initiatives that, if you go across, and I'll just take one, if you notice, the Morewells, which is Initiative 1.1.1, it has an owner, okay? In the middle there, those names are the owners. And those people now own that particular goal. And then, if you go to the right of the owner, you have the activities as to how you actually get there. And then if you go over to the far-right-hand side, you'll see what our schedule is to achieve that. So this is the actual plan. It's measurable, it's accountable, and it can be changed, if necessary, because life does change as we move forward. So this is our water supply plan, this is our power supply plan. Customer This is our power supply plan, customer service, and rates. And I want to stop here because I know, for a second, because I know this is a major issue. And we talk about both water rates and electric rates. But let's take electric rates and let's be, you know, very honest as to where we are today. GWP is among the highest in Southern California in electric rates. We are not the highest. Depending upon how you measure us and what classification and what time of year and lots of different ways, we are either second or third, generally, in terms of our rate structure. San Diego Gas and Electric is always higher than us, so that's one that's higher. City of Lodi is always higher than us. But there's no question that we are at the higher end. So there's no sense in trying to not discuss that. So what is our plan? We really have four issues associated with electric rates, and I think it's important to understand what those issues are. They're all shown up there, and I know it's hard to read, but every one of them is delineated, and there's a plan to mitigate these issues. We have, right now, two long-term energy contracts that are well above market. For various reasons, they have become above market. And you can see it here. One is Shoal Canyon. That's our landfill gas contract. The other is Portland General Electric. Those two contracts, given their over-market position right now and in the past and going forward through the end of the contract, if we were able to mitigate those two, we'd probably bring rates down about 10% to 12% today, just by doing that. That's significant. That's material. That has meaning. So those are two areas that we are concentrating on right now. There's already strategies in place to mitigate. How successful we're going to be, couldn't tell you, but we are on it. And we know that's an issue. Then beyond that, you have a couple of other areas that we are planning to enhance our revenue, which will start to bring rates down. We talked about enhancing the transfer, okay? We're not looking to reduce the transfer. We're not looking to do anything other than enhance it through our own efforts to sell additional power outside of our system. We talked about bringing those dollars up to about $10 million within five years. We're convinced we can do that. If we do that, that $10 million can help to continue to support the transfer with no problem, as it is today, plus start to bring rates down substantially over where they are today. And then finally, obviously, the most obvious one that we're working on right now is cost-cutting within our own operating budget structure. Now, I would be remiss to say that our operating budget is really not -- it's not out of whack. It's fairly competitive with our neighboring utilities. Are there areas to cut? Absolutely. We've already cut back substantially on overtime. We've cut back on outside contracts. We will continue to do that. It's the right thing to do. And that's an area where we can probably provide another 3% to 5% in terms of reduction. We're not bloated, however, and we still have a major obligation to serve, both electric and water services. And in these economic times, it gets tougher and tougher to do that. So we have to balance our obligation to serve with what it costs to actually do that. But those are the areas that we're concentrating on. Now, if we were to do all of those things, as we said, we would probably have close to a 20% rate decrease. That's very, very substantial. That would put us in the middle of the pack. That's our plan. By the way, that would also bring us to about 35% below Edison, brings it back to where we started. Now, that won't happen tomorrow. I'd like to say that it would, and I'd like to say we could get there within, you know, six months. Can we make progress? We can make progress. Over the course of the next year, if we're successful in some of our efforts to renegotiate some of these contracts, I think we can start to look at a reduction in rates. Will it happen? I don't know. I do know that within five years, we'll make it happen. So our five-year plan addresses it and says we're on track. We recognize where we are, and we know what we have to do. But that's the rate plan. There's a little bit more to it, but those are the major issues that put us in the position we're in today. I mentioned the water side. Water, you know, for better or worse, we're already in pretty good shape. The bad news is, we know there's going to be water increases from our water supplier. All water agencies today are in the same position. So we'll all sink or swim on that same process. So from a rate standpoint, that's our major initiative. We have other things in there, many different things. I mentioned one of the other initiatives is theft of service. If we're successful in theft of service, that could actually be another 5% to 10%. It could actually be that much. Water infrastructure, as I say, I won't go through these because these are the actual activities. Power, you can see there's a lot of issues in power. Some of them are already in the works. Glorieta Substation, you've already seen that. It's already been brought to you. Our workforce issues, our systems issues. City of Glendale, and of course, in here, one thing you will find is that some of the initiatives utilize the same activities over and over again to get to the same place. So they're all integrated. And you'll see that, for example, under new revenue sources. It's hard to see, but it's 9.2.2. I'm the owner of that one, and so with that one, I reuse a number of the initiatives we've already talked about earlier to get to that point. So this is the overall plan. This is what our plan looks like. This is specific. As I said, it's measurable. It has ownership, accountability. Now, we expect to report back to all of our stakeholders on a regular basis, at a minimum quarterly. And we're going to do that through a scoreboard. It's implemented along with a strategic plan. It's developed to recognize everything we've just talked about. It evaluates our progress towards the goal. As I mentioned, we'll do it at least on a quarterly basis and have it available to all of our stakeholders. We'll report to you directly. And as I said, the report will be communicated to yourself, city manager, our commission, city departments, and our employees, and the public, for that matter. This is the scoreboard. It's very, very simple. I wanted everybody to be able to see this in a very simplified manner. And what it does is it takes our goals, our KRAs, our important pieces and the goals, and it says, here's when it's due, here's who owns it, and the quarter of each year it's reported on. And you can see, it's color-coded. It's a dashboard style. So it's either going to be exceeding expectations, beating expectations, or we're behind. Everyone will see that, and will know on a quarterly basis where we stand. So here's -- those two charts represent our entire scoreboard. Now, remember, that's a scoreboard for everyone, so that's why we've simplified it. And finally, we have --
GWP's done a great job in purchasing renewable resources. We're a bit of ahead of the curve there, but we have to do more. In water, absolutely taking the lead in areas like Chrome 6 and finding ways to better utilize the resources we have here locally instead of letting it go to the ocean. For those of us in government, it's going to be constantly looking for ways to reduce our costs, be more efficient, be more effective, in order to continue to deliver electric and water in a way that meets our objective, which is to be both reliable as well as competitive and, at the same time, deliver the best quality product we possibly can.
So that's our plan, and that is the entire plan. And before I stop, I want to show you one thing, because this is very, very telling. This was something that we put together just very recently. Because there's been so much discussion over our rates and our cost of service, what we did is we took a look at what a typical, single-family household, Glendale, would look at with all of its services. That's water, electric, refuse, and sewer. And we compared them to our surrounding cities. And interestingly, what we found was something we hadn't expected. Glendale's the lowest. So when you take all the city services, all of them, put them together, they're the lowest. Well, I'm very, very proud of that. I think that's cool.
Oh, no, no, I'm just --
I thought you were showing me a four percent --
A supplemental comment here, because the criticism here will be, oh, I see. So you put them all together so it blends in electric. But there's a tendency, especially in this campaign season, to pull the negative items out and to extol that as you're on the campaign trail, as you're criticizing the city, and in effect, lose the whole picture. So when these questions begin to arise about electricity, I asked Glenn, and Public Works is two of these, refuse collection and sewer, and I said, let's get a whole picture of what does it cost a resident for their utilities in Glendale, at least all of those that we build? And I didn't know what the answer was going to be when we did that, but I said, let's see what that picture is. And this is what Glenn's presenting here.
Oh, but you only used five cities. You should have used 20. Then see if we're the lowest. That's the negative side of what come out.
But again, while not frankly dodging the question of our electric rates, because we do want them lower, it's part of GWP's strategic plan. I know you do, we do, and we will find ways to make that happen. We need to keep our eye on the big picture, which is, even with those rates, it is -- Glendale is still a bargain in the area of utilities, if you take all of the city-provided utilities into consideration. We've known that in the area of our refuse collection, we are one of the lowest, yet with one of the best levels of service in refuse collection, and we continue to be.
So I thought this was very telling. This, to me, was eye-opening. And as Mr. Starbitt said, we had no idea what to expect here, quite frankly. But I will show you this, because in, you know, in all fairness, because this is our issue. If we look at, again, just surrounding utilities, okay, we're not even looking at Lodi, which is the highest in the state. Depending upon, and again, this is the issue here, depending upon how you look at us at any given time, we could be one of the highest, the highest, the third highest. It all depends. But if you notice, what we did is we broke this down for single-family households, one at 500 kilowatt-hours and one at 200 kilowatt-hours. And if you notice, at 500, we're the third highest in the area, okay? There's more, you know, as I say, Lodi is higher than us in the state. At 200 kilowatt-hours, okay, we're the highest. But again, you know, if you look at the differential in dollars, it's not staggering. But we are, there's no question, we are at the higher end. So I wanted to be very honest and upfront about that, but we recognize it, and we have a plan to address it.
And we might also address here, because you will hear, in the state, the problem is when you compare Northern California to Southern California on electric rates, Northern California has advantages that we will never be able to compete with. They have a great deal of hydro. That hydro is located in Northern California. They have geothermal. It's located in geothermal. They do not have the transmission issues that we have, just like water. We have to transport most of our water down to Southern California. The same with electricity. We have to transport it from outside the area, and what we produce here is natural gas, which has been very high. We don't have hydro in Southern California. What hydro we do have, and we have a very small amount, we have to transport that almost across the entire state to get it here. So when you compare Southern California utilities with Northern California, you're going to lose that race. It's not even fair to try to compare it. But when you look at us more appropriately in conjunction with our other Southern California utilities, then the picture's very different.
So, thank you very much. I'd be happy to take questions.
You might just to give them the benefit of --
You want to --
You might quickly scroll through the remaining slides that have the refuse, sewer, and water, so they can see those as well.
All right. Let me, yeah, I have a few what I call hip slides here, which I'll go through very, very quickly. Here's water. Water puts us right in the middle of the pack, as you can see. So water is, I won't say not an issue, because of course it is, but it's, you know, we're not by any means the high one here. Refugees and sewer, and this is, and I thank Steve Zern for this, very helpful, but if you notice, a pretty big difference here.
I might also add that not too long ago, the city of Los Angeles refuse rate to residential was zero. They have funded their 10,000 police officer initiative by a number of years ago, instituting a refuse collection fee for residential in the city. Previously, the general fund absorbed all of that, and now they are one of the highest in the area.
And what this does, this is a comparison of a typical monthly residential bill, and this is right up to date. This is as of February. This is the most accurate we have. And I think if you take a look, you'll see that, you know, Glendale is that yellow in the middle. So there are others that, depending upon the usage level, and see, this is where it gets complex. Usage level, there are others that are substantially higher than us. As you can see, Edison, in some cases, not all cases, as you notice, as you go through, if you take a look at the different color charts, Edison at some times does fall below us. But that's not always the case. In every case, San Diego and Lodi is above us. Riverside's very, very close, and Burbank is not that far behind.
Pasadena hit and miss.
Yeah. So you can see, it's not an exact science. You know, it's not like we're out there being the absolute worst, but we know we have an issue. And then this is the water, so just you can get it. We're right dead center. And then this is something that I just wanted to show you very quickly. On the reliability standpoint, over the last few years, we've spent $70 million to improve reliability within the city of Glendale on the electric side. This tells you, the blue line basically is the overall index of how we measure from month to month our performance when it comes to minutes of outages. As you can see, it's dropping substantially. So, and that's, those are real numbers. Our goal is 40, 40 minutes. We're actually below our goal right now. We've done, I think, a very, very good job, but we're not finished. We have a long way to go. We want to get it way down, way below that goal, but you can see that we're on that. And then finally, this is outage frequency per customer. This is the one people really look at. And if you go back to 2005, we were almost at three outages per customer per year in Glendale. I'm sure you all remember that. Last year, we were less than one outage per customer, so substantial progress has been made. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. -- excuse me a second. Thank you, Mr. Stager. Mr. Quintara, Mr. Weaver.
I have a quick question. 70 million, in what span of time is that?
Over three years.
And over, in three years, in the last three years, you've spent 70 million upgrading what?
Our infrastructure, both. It boils down to the distribution, the wires and poles, substation upgrades, substantial substation upgrades, and transmission upgrades, along with additional trimming and --
And in your opinion, these were upgrades that should have been done, what, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, 15 years ago?
Yes.
Quite a while, quite a while. So the previous city councils didn't spend the kind of money that needed to be spent, is what I draw from that.
Mr. City Manager and Mr. Weaver.
Well, on that very point, the further back you go, there was frankly lesser need, obvious need, to do it. As I describe it, Glendale's been living on its infrastructure laurels for a long time in electric and water. The three bond issues were in 2003, 2006, and 2008, a combined total of about $107 million. And the chart is kind of the proof in the pudding about the investment of those in infrastructure has had a demonstrable impact on our outages and reliability.
Okay. Mr. Weaver.
What year did you come here?
Exactly one year ago last week. But who's counting?
The rate's been going down.
Yes.
And what year do you plan to retire?
Please keep going the way they are. I'm not retiring.
Because I see 2020 out there, and I want to make sure you're around to be accountable.
As the saying goes today, his 401 became a 402.
That's correct.
Or a 201. His 401 became a 201.
If I'm lucky.
Mr. Manager in.
I am very impressed by this, and I can't think I can emphasize that enough. What you're telling us and what you've given us is a structured definitive plan with regard to the electric rates, to lower the electric rates to meet that goal of 35% lower than Southern California Edison.
Correct.
I think that is huge news. I'm a little disappointed that many of the critics for our entire process and organization are not here to be able to listen to this firsthand. I think it is, it's an excellent point that you made. So one of the, one of your points to reduce that was the dealing with that, the ethane gas from --
Shoal Canyon.
From Shoal Canyon. So if we did not have Shoal Canyon, we wouldn't be dealing with that additional charge. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, it's generated by the landfill process, and we can't burn it off. We had to somehow deal with it in a environmentally friendly way.
Yes.
I think that's, I think that's great news. I think that's, I think that's great news. I think it's also a great, I mean, I was applauding because I'm glad that we finally put together the entire bundle of utility services that we provide our citizens, and that it is, at least for the five cities surveyed, that it is the lowest. And that is overlooked by the critics. And the critics will nitpick and look at one particular item and complain and draw conclusions and plan a, I don't know who they're going to burn in effigy March 15th, but it might, might be me, it might be you, it might be my colleagues. It's a very good step in the right direction. I know your work started months before, this must have taken many months to, to put together and to sit down and plan. I very much like the idea of going after the theft and the other losses from the line. I think that's a very fertile ground for recouping, basically, our, our services that are, are being obtained fraudulently and illegally. The balanced energy portfolio that you referenced, what sort of numbers are you, do you have in mind?
Well, we need to get, be able to get to probably 35%. Okay, that's, that's a goal that we...
By what year?
Well, that's by 2020. And the issue is, how do you get there? You know, what's your increment? And so that, that's the next thing we'll work.
Apparently, we're 17, 18?
Right now, actually, right now, if you, if you count Hoover, we're over 20. We're over 20%, about 21% right now.
I think you should count Hoover.
Well, I think we should count Hoover. Unfortunately, the State of California does not agree, but, so that'll be an issue for us moving forward as to how we replace Hoover in terms of how the state counts renewables.
I think this city, our residents, are becoming more, more aware and more sensitive to the renewable energy ideas, so I think the community will definitely support you on this. I know you have the green energy program as it is, where you can buy 100% renewable for a slight surcharge, but I think it's great, and everyone that I talk to is really in favor of, you know, getting as much wind power, solar, geothermal, from whatever source available. I know you're continuously looking to get those contracts as they come available. So I'm very, I'm very happy with this, and I am certainly going to be touting the, the great work that you've done for the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Uh-oh. You have one more question?
Another question. Mr. Steiger, I'm very surprised at the sort of percentage or theft of service. I can't imagine, I mean, is that mostly commercial situations or residential? How does that work?
I've had a substantial amount of experience in this back in New Jersey, as you might imagine. New Jersey has a bit of a theft of service issue, as most urbanized states would. It's not unusual for a city like Glendale to have an issue with theft of service, particularly if we've never really concentrated on it. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't see where we have. So it's, it's not just commercial. You can be assured that there's residential, commercial, industrial, it's at every level. How rampant it is, we really don't know, but we intend to find out. And when we find out, the good news is, once we find it, that will reduce the amount of losses we have and increase the amount of revenue we get. So it's, it's a double-edged sword.
And what's your estimate at this point? What, do you have any idea? I mean, are you just...
I'm going to be conservative and say it's at least 5% of our total.
And the industry average would be?
Industry average for theft of service? If, if it's concentrated on, probably less than 2. So, so if we can get down to about less than 2, then we're doing something.
Well, let me ask you this. Ultimately, isn't someone paying? I mean, how, physically, how do you, if I have a home...
Mr. Quinter, you're not asking for a how-to, are you? Because I'm not sure that's exactly a great idea.
We want to know what not to do.
Let me give you an example of a case that came to my attention.
Yeah, give me an example.
A pool and a spa that get installed with permits, everything is okay. Subsequently, somebody who knows how to do it comes in, wires around the meter. So in effect, it bypasses the meter, goes, takes the power to a sub-panel that you have for your spa and your pool. Then in effect, your pump and everything operates around the meter. So unless, unless a meter reader, for example, is paying attention to some metrics where they know a pool of a certain size and a spa is going to generate a certain amount of electricity, then we don't know. We're reading the meter, and the meter's giving us the numbers, everything looks okay. We don't see behind the metal face of the panel to see where the wires are actually going. So with metrics and looking at our billing system, you can begin to pinpoint, oh, a house with a pool this size and a spa, but my goodness, their electric readings don't seem to jive with the metrics that you'd normally expect for something of that size.
I'd like you to move forward with utmost speed to get that in order. Absolutely.
It's on the plan.
Mr. Starburt, could you say that a little more slowly, so you, you, what are you going to ask?
Mr. Yusefian can tell you.
Well, thank you. Hey, I'll have to have you out to the house, Bob. Now, you have wire around, and the green wire goes to, Mr. Yusefian.
That's, that's so right. Do not try this at home, because you, you, you may be completely electrocuted when you try to do that. I had a couple of questions. It had to do with the account, unaccounted amount. I can see how you can literally do this with electricity generally. You don't, you have a little bit of waste because of the equipment, but anything after that gets stolen. On the issue of the water, you have about a 5%. Is part of that is water that is being stolen, or it has more to do with the water that we have leakages we don't know about, like we had on Grand View, and it's been going for years and years, and we didn't know about it, and it basically wore out all the substructure of the road? Do we have any kind of a detection system that we can tell? Or are we able to meter it at the pump to see how many gallons the pump is creating, and then how much is being used? And if there is a certain amount of discrepancy, maybe the line in between has a leakage or so?
We don't have that ability to any great degree today. However, as we move into smart grid over the next couple of years, we will start to have a much closer ability to do that. But today, we really don't have the ability to measure it in any meaningful way.
I would, I would think a help with regard to the leakage, and Peter, correct me here, but the line, lining work that we're doing is going to help, to the extent we have leaks, that lining process, I presume, will help us seal up leaks. It may be in some of the oldest of the lines in the city. I know, and Glenn brought me back some statistics on some of the Mountain Rossmoine line work that the staff has done. The improvement in water flow is absolutely astounding. The one example was four-inch mains, which right now, we wouldn't even install a new four-inch main, but the existing four-inch main, that previously at Hydrant was getting 200 to 300 gallons a minute, after lining, as much as 3, 4, 5,000 gallons a minute in flow out of the same four-inch line. Just phenomenal numbers out of that lining effort.
And there are no plans to install any kind of a leak detection wires? So in case, when, you know, there, there are some methods that they install with pipes in case there's a leakage, it triggers it and tells your computer that there's a leakage somewhere down here. We're not doing that.
We're not looking to do it that way.
Okay.
What we are looking to do is have automation in every meter, and then automation at every pump house, and that will start to link the two. Yeah. But it won't be done with, you know, with hardware.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about is the issue with the gas at the Shoal Canyon. Now, part of the reason the cost of the gas is too much is because it was connected to the, the natural gas, and the formula that was figured out, nobody figured out that the natural gas will go to what it has gone, except recently, the price of gas has plummeted big time. So with the, the cost of gas coming down so much, has our contract changed with them?
No. The, the issue is this, without getting, you know, too complex. If you go back to when it was originally developed, the formula linked in the cost of transportation, you know, the fixed cost of transportation. And then assessed the, a formulaic type of process to gas index. So what you have is, no matter what the gas price is, there's now a multiplier to that, and since the price of transportation went way down from the original, it kicked the rest of that formula up. It kind of did a converse. So instead of our paying as we had originally about, let's say, 0.85 times index, which is actually a, a good deal, we're now paying about 1.85 times index. So it doesn't matter whether gas is high or low, we're always paying 1.85 times that.
In addition to that, we're having to buy natural gas and use natural gas in order to effectively burn the methane in our boilers.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah. So unfortunately, it doesn't matter where natural gas is, we're still paying over.
And when is that contract coming to an end?
That does, 2014 is when that comes.
2014. Thank you.
All right. I have one question, actually, a question and a comment. Mr. Steiger, when, earlier in the presentation, you were talking about transfers?
Yes.
And I didn't quite, didn't quite follow you on that, and I didn't know that you were talking about transfers of funds or transfers of, I wasn't sure what you were referring to. And also, you were talking about cost-cutting. I also want to know how that bears on infrastructure.
Okay. First, when we talk about the transfer, we talk specifically about the yearly transfer of funds from GWP to the General Fund.
Right.
And what we've done is put, put a process in place that will take time to bring additional dollars into GWP that we will target directly to the transfer. So if there's a need to increase or stabilize the transfer, it won't be putting as much pressure on GWP to do it, okay? In other words, we'll have additional funding sources that we can, we can look at to help offset some of that for, for our own purposes, because that takes dollars out of our, out of our own operations. So we recognize that's our obligation, and it's not a problem. But what we're trying to do is be very, very innovative in terms of how does it get funded, rather than just saying, okay, it's part of our margin.
Let me give you an example. Increasing the net profit on wholesale sales.
Right.
To their $10 million goal. They're achieving only a fraction of that today, and we've always felt there's a greater opportunity for wholesale sales done in a responsible way that will increase the net profit off of wholesale sales. And as a result, then relieve the pressure on the rates from the transfer. And that goal of the wholesale rate to get it to $10 million is specifically one of those objectives of increasing revenues to reduce the pressure on the rates.
Okay. All right, thank you. And my comment is that I think that the mayor's segment was far better than the city manager's segment.
No question about it. No question about it. If nothing else, you weren't rocking in your chair.
Well, I was just about to say, if you ever do that again, Mr. Steiger, please make sure you lock his chair in place.
Actually, it was, it was a camera person, the camera guy kept going.
Yeah, okay.
I have no comment.
All right. I have one speaker card. Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council. I would like to request five minutes, if I may. I think three minutes is a bit short after this long presentation. I first would like to say that any time a city division undertakes a strategic plan is a good thing, especially one that is going to undertake specific measures and specific objectives. I have been impressed for, for quite a long time that I've been attending the Glendale Water and Power Commissions, that the electric utility reports are really outstanding. They have decided what they were going to achieve. They reported every month on their efforts and their status. They report on their failures. They report on what they will do to do things better in the future, and they achieve their goals. It's a, I think that the rest of Glendale should take a look at how the electric utility has reported and follow through on precisely that. Now, when you look at a stakeholder map as it was presented to you, that's about 60 stakeholders, and you notice the one that I darkened for you, and that is the residential portion of the stakeholders. Most organizations have a significant number of stakeholders, especially one that has to deal with hazardous materials and air quality and so on. But it is that residential stakeholder that needed more attention, in my opinion, with regard to how the cities are, and the residents are communicating with regard to this plan. A strategic plan, above everything, is a communication tool. It's, this is where we're going, this is how we're going to approach it, and, and it involves communicating to make sure that the public knows about it. But as you all know, at the Glendale Water and Power Commission, hardly anyone from the public shows up. Mr. Weaver would say, well, it's because there is no problem. But as I've walked the precincts for some candidates, people are up in arms with regard to the rates. And how, when they are told about the, just the level of the cost per resident for kilowatt-hour, they are really surprised, it's no wonder. They're hurting. So anyway, here's the, a report done by the City of Anaheim, residential rate comparison. The highest, of course, is Glendale. Now, apparently, the Chamber of Commerce was one of the stakeholders that we're conferred with, but if they were told that the commercial rates in Glendale are the highest in California for commercial, well, they also would have been pretty surprised. You see, it is how we communicate that information to the general public and whether, you know, are we are presenting it to them in a way that is clear, that it is fair, and that it accepts exactly where we are. Now, to try to couch this cost along with the cost of refuse, many people don't know that 62% of the population live in multifamily housing, and if you were to say, how much are we charging the residents, it does not include what the landlord is paying. I wonder if that cost was actually included in that calculation. I think, my guess is that somebody's playing with that figure to try to make it appear a little bit more, more palatable and a little friendlier. The point is, is that families are having a hell of a time trying to meet those particular rates, and you know it by the number of people who are, whose electricity is being cut off. 4,700 in the last fiscal year, and it's expected over, well over 6,000 people this year. That's a number that is relevant, and he was not discussing this presentation as being a major measure, as an objective for the residents. I have a couple of suggestions. First of all, that in this type of venue, as in the Glendale Water and Power Commission, as it is here, as it in the other venues, what I have seen the strategic plan presented, the ability of the public to challenge the numbers and challenge the message is very, very limited, like it is today. And that's a problem, because then we don't have the kind of interchange, because somebody raises the flag, hey, Brown Act, we can't really discuss it. And that's a significant problem for me. I believe that if we set a certain level of usage, let me say as an example, 10 kilowatt-hours per day for, for a family, for electricity, and 100 gallons of usage of water per day per residence, that these individuals who are living to their, to their most essential needs, have a significantly lower rate of electricity and water starting immediately. Not four years from now, not 10 years from now, but these are the individuals that need immediate relief, because we are under very significant economic strains. And if individuals can live within that means, and I've tried it myself, and I did it with my family in my household, it can be done. And I think that this is an approach that we should be looking at. I think that is also missing in the discussion is the impact of the transfers of money from the Glendale Water and Power to the General Fund, and how that impacts the rates that they must charge. Again, I got 11 seconds left, not enough time to really delve into many of these issues. I wish we had another opportunity to really challenge the presentation. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Weaver.
The last time I understood what we do in the city, we're elected to represent the public, and we get reports and information from our staff, we ask questions. There's no dialogue between 207 people and our utilities or any other department. We do the representing, and if that is insufficient in the mind of the voters, you vote us out of office. We can't delve into every little thing that comes along. We have a lot on our plate. Every week, there's a lot. And we have to have trust in our departments, our divisions, that do the work. If we happen to miss something, it's human nature. We don't catch every little thing. And when we do, we, I think we tend to pony up and say, we missed it, we should have caught that. That's human nature, too. But to think that we're operating as efficiently as the federal government of the United States of America, well, I know we're doing that well. So, you know, saying we're not doing enough, no. I don't believe in micromanagement, and I don't believe the citizens of this city expect us to micromanage every department of the city. us to micromanage every department of the city. At least, they're not telling me they want me to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank GWP for putting this together. I've been here for eight years, and I've seen strategic plans come, I've seen strategic plans go. This is something that I'm surprised Mr. Milano is not happy with. This is something that he has asked for. I look at this, it says what the goal is, it says what is it they're going to do, it says who's in charge, what are the tasks that has to be done, and for God's sake, a timeline? I've never seen this before. So, I mean, this is what a big construction job, a contractor would do. Will sit there and say, the drywaller is going to be so-and-so, at this time, he's going to start, at this time, he's going to finish, this is what he's going to do, this is what it's going to cost. So, I must say, this format is a format that we should use in other departments to an extent. I want to congratulate you. I don't know how much time it took, but it's well worth it, because a few years down the road, whether I'm here or not, somebody else is going to sit there in 2011 and say, well, Mr. Steiger, you missed this one, you made that one, how come this one didn't get there, and bravo, you're ahead of schedule on this one, and so on and so forth. And I think this is very, very important. So, I want to congratulate you. I think this is great. I've been one of those people who have a tendency to criticize things, but then again, when you are dead on and you're right, you're right. I don't think we can always be 100 percent. I'm yet to see 100 percent. But I think this is great strides in the direction of getting to there. So, I appreciate that very much. The only other thing that I would like to see somewhere down the line in here in your strategies is the issue of green energy, is I would like to see a chart like this that says how many solar arrays we're going to have within so many years, how many kilowatts you're going to generate out of that, what is that in City of Glendale, how many households, how many, let's say, garages that we own that we could put something similar that we have done in the Glendale College. I need to see that a little bit more, but the rest of this stuff, I think, is fantastic. So, I wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you, and we will provide that for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Weaver.
I did want to thank you, too, Glenn. Very logically laid out. I think you took, what, nine months?
It took nine months, yeah.
You've been here 12 months, and it took you nine of those months. It laid out. I think you did a great job. Congratulations, civil engineer.
Thank you, but I really do have to thank the team. It was a team effort.
Oh, of course.
There is a lawyer on the team, I'd like to point out.
Yeah, I know, and there's two civils.
Yeah. But as I, and I don't, again, I want to emphasize the fact that we had well over 200 GWP employees participate in this.
Amazing.
To me, that was, that said it all.
Mr. Steiger, I do want to add my thanks to you, not just for bringing us this strategic plan, but also, I think you've been a tremendous addition to this city organization, I have to tell you, in, just in the way you presented it and explained. Also, the openness and the willingness to be open on areas where we are succeeding and areas where we have work to do. I think that is very important to the city's credibility as well. So, I want to thank you, I want to thank the staff. I know how hard you worked on this, and I appreciate, actually, I appreciate you allowing me to be a part of that. And I hope that we will be hearing from you again on this progress, almost like a progress chart. Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I think it's one of the finest works we've seen come out of GWP in my time here, and indeed, we have already begun to use Glenn's talents, and when we hired Glenn, an area that was a forte for him was in strategic planning. You might recall my commenting on that. And we see the results of that here. We're going to use Glenn with our other departments and executives, looking at how this model can be used by other departments as well. He's done a great job.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to A to note and file, and I hope it's not filed too deep in the file.
We have a motion and a second to note and file.
Roll call. Need to vote on that, or just by proclamation?
I don't think we do need to vote. Oh, I thought it was vacuuming. All right, I'm sorry. Yes, let's call the roll then, Mr. Kasak. If there are no further comments.
I actually have one question.
Mr. Yusefian.
First of all, this is what I got, which is five pages in my packet. So, I was kind of disappointed. I was very happy to see this. So, my question is, is this on the web for the public to see?
It will be.
Great.
And I should have mentioned, and I apologize, the plan itself will be a document that you'll receive shortly, within the next couple of weeks, a full document that documents everything you see there plus. And then, every employee and any member of the public will also get, that wants it, will get a short version of it. We call it a trifold, but...
Summary.
A summary. They'll have it, so every employee will have it, so we'll have that for you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Kasak.
Councilmember Njarion?
Yes.
Quintaro?
Hi.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
We'll adjourn for city council.
Second.